Pickleball, Greg, do you?
Well, of course.
Always like to have Cheryl.
She's here.
I'm happy to have Cheryl give us a summary of what we understand. They had a copy of your timeline, which was very helpful. Bottom line is, I'll cut the chase, but you can add to the details. Bottom line is, the courts went in last summer. There were some concerns raised by a few residents near the courts of the impact of the noise. The Parks and Rec Committee went through a series of steps to try to mitigate the noise to the reducing, controlling the time. And embarked on a study, hired a consultant to look at potential mitigation measures focusing on some sound barriers at the courts primarily. Commissioned a study that recommended extending the poles 12 feet high, putting barrier, soundproofing barriers on those, on the poles. It also recommended that the equipment that is as a lower sound generation factor be used, or at least encouraged to be used. So that's the recommendation from the Parks and Rec Committee to you to move forward with installing those barriers on the court and to encourage the use of the new equipment. So that's a very high level overview, and I can have you show in more details. But that's where things stand. So the recommendation is before you, and you need to decide what to do with that recommendation.
I think you will take the good comment on this Hollywood's double hearing. But first, I would like to get some of the board.
Yeah.
Difficult topic, these walls. What do we know about them, these barriers? Who's used them? I don't know what the cost is. Who's used them? What's worked, what hasn't worked? Are there any around here that, I haven't even seen pictures. I don't know what's involved with this. But there are an awful lot of unknowns that we're putting an awful lot of faith in here with regard to this product.
Well, one of the things, I know more than I knew a year ago, I'll tell you that.
Sure you did. I was pretty involved.
Yeah, I do not know everything, I will say. But originally, when we were looking at soundproof barriers, what we saw were colored, basically, plastic pieces that go on the fence. And we find out those actually reflect the sounds they can. If you're standing there and it's between us, I wouldn't hear things on the, but if I was back or higher or it would actually reflect the sound. So learned that's not good. So when we talked about putting something on the fence, there's that, there's more of like a blanket type thing. The neighbors, so there's a couple of neighbors who are bothered by the sound, but there's other neighbors who do not want to see a wall there, so they've asked us to look into transparent barriers, which is why that was our recommendation based on what we heard from other neighbors. So in the end, researching, there is only one type of transparent barrier, only one company makes it. Just having to have someone here tonight who knows more about it than I do. If we do want to ask them questions, we have Joe Lyman in the back, who is also an ambassador for the area for pickleball. So because they're the only company that makes it, that is probably what we would look at doing. Since our recommendation, I have also been reached out by USA Pickleball that they would like to look into possibly running a couple of tests, have us test out some stuff and then possibly get a discounted rate. But I do not believe any of that stuff is transparent. And our committee does recommend the transparent because that's what we heard from neighbors. Of course, then we'll also get into costs. Right now, what we have is our CPA grant money minus the cost of the pickleball sound mitigation study that we did. So obviously, that's also going to be part of the equation is how much do we want to spend on that? We just want to spend what we have. We could maybe do more.
I have a question. In the analysis, there were two things mentioned. One was the clear sound mitigation, but there was also mention of a tennis ball. I don't know what that looks like, or I was just wondering, what's the cost difference between the two? And what is a tennis ball?
I think Brian's like, he was thinking about an eight move. He was at the meeting when we did talk about it, so I did look into tennis bubbles, very at a high level. One company said anywhere from $1 million to $2.5 million. Because you can't just have a bubble. Now, you also need lights and you need air and, you know, so you need all that. So then another company that I reached out to, I asked a little more specific. And they said, well, we could, we could get a bubble for $500,000 that would have the electricity in the air, but it would not stop the sound.
Right, yeah, my price range, thank you for that.
It's just able to play when it rains.
You could play 24/7.
There you go. I wasn't clear on what the actual cost of, for the 12-foot clear proposed sound barrier.
So I do have one estimate.
Do you want to tell Chris?
No.
Put me ahead.
No. So I do have an estimate from the one company. So that it wouldn't, we would also need to extend the fence, so there would be that additional cost. But that one company that does do them, and again, we have our representative here if we want to ask more specific questions, that would be $26,720 approximately. It's not.
This is for what, a?
For a clear barrier in the front. And then on the Sweeney Park side, halfway down, it would be more of a noise absorbing, so it would not be clear. But on that side, 60 feet down, 12 feet high, the deep.
And you mentioned that along with that $27,000, that's the one that's, it would be two sound studies?
So yes, and they would test the sound before. They've already done a couple of sound tests, but they'll do some more sound tests to see where we're at with nothing. And then they would put up their product and see what the sound is after with the guarantee of what they could do. So how many decibels they can take it down.
And so for meetings that I attended, I think there were more people concerned about the aesthetics of the acoustics as far as the neighbors thought. Obviously, there were a couple of people, two or three neighbors, that were very concerned about the acoustics. But there were a lot more that I heard were more concerned what they were looking at. Okay, so I think that's why they wanted to be declared plastic.
I read it now, so thought that clear was somewhat of a safety issue.
Birds. Birds and flying birds.
Time for jokes.
Right, so I mean, that's what I heard.
You said you got some CPC money, and I've forgotten, I didn't write down the amount.
We have $19,000 left.
$19,000. And you would make your, for this mitigation, it would be 26, 27? So you're looking for?
So if that's what, if you accept that recommendation and you also agree that that's what should be done, then yes, we'd also have to find, figure out where to get the extra money.
Could that come from the revolving block?
It could.
From the revolving block? Because I think we take money out of it sometimes, then.
Yes.
Greg, you just said more about the, it's been going on for a year. We've been hearing a lot. We needed to kind of finish it and make a decision and move on, and we're looking for your support.
A couple of things. So the report that was put together, that was done with modeling, were they actually here? Or they said, send us the decibel levels and we'll use, we'll look at, use GPS to look at your geography and put something together? So they were not actually here, standing out there, looking at various, so this is all modeling?
This is all modeling. And it did send them the state decibel report, but they didn't find it really relative to what they were doing. So they were, they used the decibel counts just from their general knowledge of what's around.
So they weren't even our decibel counts?
No. And they gave us a good idea of how to understand it, but they also called 127 a country road, I believe, so.
It's a state, yeah.
We'd want the real numbers before we started. I mean, we have the state numbers, but as the Board of Health said too, we want some more readings done.
One of the things that they say a lot in here is that the sound that comes out of the pickleball court is not like a waterfall where it's a continuous roar. It's intermittent and more like living next to a rifle range.
Right.
Which people do, people do, right? People, yeah, but so it's, it's, it's the nature of the noise.
Right, there's frequency and the frequencies, you know what I mean?
The frequency and the intermittent nature that make it particularly difficult. Which means that you have to be careful when you're either your installer or the state is measuring, that they are in fact measuring in a way that reflects the nature of the noise, not just. Okay. I would like to hear from the expert.
Yeah.
Joe, are you an expert?
That'd be me.
Yeah.
Joe Lyman, he's not from Manchester, but he's been asked, visited the vast capital grid. He has everything out to Woodster from the Hampshire down to the islands. Running into obviously many cities and towns that are having noise issues. And there are several different ways of mitigating, one being the barriers. Company that I'm involved with, they're the only ones that have a clear product, which does mitigate the sound, not quite as heavily as three of their other products. They have different ones that depending upon the distance from residents. But the clear worked very well along the 127. It's what we have under 20 foot long. Right now, it's 10 foot height fencing. It's been suggested to increase that to 12. And along the sides, the six foot side, six foot fencing, and increasing it to 12. So there will be that cost, efficient to the panels themselves. But the clear panels do two things. One is provide the noise mitigation, but also for safety purposes, it allows security. So you can actually see into the court, so no nefarious issues are going on in there. So those courts, I had provided the information, the actual logistics of where they are to the company that did the sound test, did the presentation that you have in your hands. And I had done some sound tests, so, which I also provided to them, to Cheryl. So the, what was there originally, I'm assuming there were two tennis courts, which would be a lot quieter, obviously. Now there's six pickleball courts, and I took readings when nobody was there, took readings when there were all six courts going. And when, just this morning, there were just four courts, one of which I was on. Jeff over here was there as well. So the, so you have a combination of issues. One is you don't want it to make, to look like a totally enclosed building. So that, the clear will work for that. The, and the other ones that we would use on the side, a performance series, which absorbs the sound. And this company that, they're not, they didn't just get into this business, they've been doing it for like 50 years, sound mitigation. So that's their core business. The company, the product comes from New Zealand. And like I say, they've been making these kinds of products for about 50 years. So it's not, not a new venture for them. Some of the other companies are relatively new. One product is being used at Burlington, Mass, that they really wouldn't use again, except that they already bought them. And they're in use now. So they moved to a different location, which was a former ice rink, or skating rink. They will still, they would transport those, but I don't think they have enough to go all the way around. So I suggested filling the gap with the product from this company. But then Wellesley has issues. You know, there are issues around other cities and towns that I'm very aware of, some of which has been in the newspapers. But there's also some issues where people that don't really understand the situation, you know, from like two and a half, three miles away from a potential location. Like in Beverly, the grand old courts are built, just waiting for the purchase order for the barriers. But there, they're limited because it's on a landfill. You couldn't put up 12-foot fencing, it's only six feet. But there's a building there as well to help block the sound. So, but there are people definitely that have no ideas of any of this. And like I say, they're way beyond any sound issues. But at Sweeney, you could hear, you can hear the train when it goes by from the court, at the courts. And that's probably 300, 400 or more feet away. But that's basically the information.
Yeah, so where, I have not seen a picture. And furthermore, I'm not, where has this been installed? Like within 100 miles of here?
Well, this particular company is working, trying to get, because the company in Connecticut that has the United States rights for this product.
Yeah.
They're trying to get information from Hush Tech, which is the name of the company in New Zealand, for United States locations. But they've used a competitive brand that they've had for, that has some of the same features, except not the clear. And those are along, I think, 128, and I forget what area, but I can get that kind of information for you. And, but like you say, they've been doing it around constructions, construction sites are where this technology was originally developed for. You know, we have jackhammering and other situations that are even more annoying than pickleball.
So it's tough to find a site because a lot of it was construction sites that are no longer construction sites at all.
Right. So as a pickleball solution, I don't get the feeling that anybody has tried this as a pickleball solution. Receiving the story.
They have.
In New Zealand.
A similar product.
Correct.
But not around here, because there are lots of towns that are going through what we're going through.
Right.
And none of them have pulled the trigger on anything yet.
They have. Like he said, the Burlington, they bought this, like if you ask around first, the first thing that comes up is this stuff that's called Acoustifence. So Burlington bought the Acoustifence, and then they put it up and it didn't work. It.
That's my second question.
It worked to a point. That was the thing that I was talking about, that if I put it between us right now and you talked, I wouldn't hear you. But if I moved back or up, I would. So it wasn't absorbing the sound. It was kind of reflecting it back. Do you think that's?
Correct, yeah. There are some that are reflective of the sound, and there are others that absorb the sound. So the ones that absorb the sound, the people within that space would not be, would not have adverse issues with the sound. But with the Acoustifence, it reflects the sound. So it's louder within that space than it is outside the space. So there are issues to consider.
Yeah.
Visibility, sound, and absorption versus reflection.
Oddly, I never thought about the various activities going on behind the darkened screens.
I definitely did, and that ran it by the chief, yes. He was not too concerned that, even if it was, even if it wasn't the clear, he wasn't too concerned. They go around, but.
Perhaps people block the cords when they're not using, so that might reduce the number of people who.
We have been doing that, so, as a timeline, yeah, we've been blocking them at 8:00 PM.
That was just an added advantage.
Yes, right.
Kathy, have any questions?
I think you said that the company would do a sound test before, a sound test afterward. And what's the guarantee of the reduction?
The technologies, they have the tests to be anywhere for the clear. It's about a 20% reduction in sound. And it will bring it.
Should be like 10 decibels now?
About that, yeah. Yeah, because right now, it's in the mid 50s.
Yeah.
Whether you're at 84 Street or 142 Summer Street, which were the two, I guess, two areas that were either complainants or suggested to, for, to do the tests.
So it's mid 50s right now, and this should reduce it to 40s?
No, 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 no.
No, no.
Reduce it to less than 50, less than 50 decibels, which is normal talking. In the report that you have, tells you, you know, roughly what.
On page.
50 decibels, that's moderate rainfall. 40, it's a refrigerator, et cetera. And 60 is normal conversation. But it's, like we're talking now, that might be around 60, don't care to be. But it's not the impact that, you know, a plastic ball on a hard surfaces, which is different. So.
You would take that into account in the report as well, right?
My question is, if the solution doesn't work, if you doesn't get the reduction that is promised, what's our recourse?
So we talked about there being a guarantee, then they would add more to it if, yeah. So they would have to add more to it by some, I don't know what else you could do.
Well, the.
Make it away and give us back our money.
Yeah.
Work out something on that respect.
Is there, is there public comment? Well, just before you open it up, I guess, to public comment, I am on the Parks and Rec committee, and I just.
And you're Muffin Driscoll.
I have all the rights. Muffin Driscoll, 33.
Bridge to.
I haven't done that in a long time. I just think it's important to note that the Parks and Rec Director Cheryl and the committee have respectfully been very diligent in trying to meet the concerns of pickleball players and the neighborhood. And I think we've been, Cheryl has been very responsive to those concerns. I think we are probably a lot earlier in the game, so to speak, than other communities that have put pickleball courts in in terms of figuring out some sound mitigation. So I have always felt like the approach is a compromise to the concerns of everyone. And I just felt that it's important to, we need to put that out on the table. You know, John, to your point, we wish there were courts we could go look at and see what these types of screens, walls, whatever, actually look like. Maybe we should go to New Zealand.
There you go.
Okay.
They're just, they're not around here yet, so we could.
Burlington.
Burlington.
Okay, so I can interrupt?
Sure, yeah.
Yeah, so what you would see is just a green wall of material. The Acoustifence, which Cheryl mentioned, there's, there are grommets, they're attached to the.
And they're talking about, see something that, like we're talking about.
Correct, okay. Yeah, so all you're going to see, and just about all of them, whether it's the company out of Western Mass or Acoustifence, which is out of Florida, or any of the others.
I think what we're going to get.
All you're going to see is a wall of green or whatever color they provide.
They want to see your product working.
Right.
Somewhere, in any application.
Perhaps a YouTube video?
Two things. One is, I'm hoping we can get samples in because the fellow that's coming from USA Pickleball who's heavily involved with all of these types of things is supposedly coming into New England sometime in the next couple of weeks. So I'm hoping to get the samples in for everybody to see. Probably after him come.
Yeah, website.
Oh, Howdy, Mayo.
Yeah, I said, yeah, it's Hush Tech USA.
Hush Tech?
Yeah, H U S H T C, USA.com. And there's half a dozen different products that are listed there, from the clear, the performance, the mission, the, I think of the other three that are all there.
Does it do any good to mix and match? I mean, if you had the high performance of the lower pack and the clear, starting 6, 5 feet up or something, does that gain you anything?
Oh, yeah, it would, it would gain, it would gain some.
Cheaper is really what you want.
No, it would be a little more expensive, because the performance is more expensive than the clear. Yeah, I'm just trying to achieve the maximum.
Right.
What we're doing in Beverly is, there'll be the solid ones facing the building. And on one side, there'll be some clear and some of the mission series, which is solid. So that way, they can see in people waiting, because there's no space, there won't be space within the confines. They put benches, so people outside the fence can at least see what's going on inside, as well as the police or anybody else.
Yeah.
On Jeffy Bench.
What are you looking for from us tonight?
Your support for sure.
Accepting the recommendation. Having a little trouble starting out the recommendation at the moment. So you're recommending a clear 12-foot fence, which requires, on the north side, requires increasing the size of the poles or in the two feet overall. Yeah, and then probably something else on the side facing, I guess that would be east, no, west.
To Sweeney Park.
Toward Sweeney, and the others toward the, on.
No, we don't do anything on the other side.
Okay.
So just on that Sweeney Park side halfway down.
Okay.
And this is mounted on the fence with grommets. It's like a big blank.
Pretty much, clear.
The units have, when they attach to each other, there's Velcro, so there's no leakage between panels. So there's no sound leakage between the panels.
But it's.
Vertically Velcroed, but then the grommets on the way, on the other three sides.
Is this, is this an item that is kind of weatherproof, 365? Or is this something that you take down in the winter? Or is this something that you take down in the winter?
It's, you leave them up.
Yeah.
They're whether, for indoor or outdoor use.
When are these samples coming in?
Well, I'm trying to, hopefully within the week and a half or so.
We don't necessarily have to put a time on it right now.
No, I'm interested, you know, it's very abstract right now.
Right. So I guess the concept now, because we've kind of been debating it at all our meetings and kind of no more information, so.
Just a question, if we were to give you our support, what are the next steps?
Working more with Joe and USA Pickleball.
To?
To see the samples.
See samples?
Yeah. Hopefully see another community that has them. Beverly's will most likely be installed for four hours, so see how it goes there.
Oh, I'm sorry, they are using the clear?
So they are getting.
See some clear, but mostly not. But the problem there is that fence is only 6.9.
If further away from the houses.
Okay.
But the closest residence is 250 feet.
So next step would be see the samples, see what Beverly does, like when would we expect to hear that with a cost estimate?
Yes.
Even a month?
When's Beverly supposed to install?
We don't know. It's a long story as to why they haven't been.
So we don't know, we don't have it installed.
Yet, but once we get the purchase order, it'll be about four weeks. So hoping sometime mid-August.
Okay, all right, well, it's not far.
Are there comments?
Hands up, online?
Okay, this time, not being a public hearing, I'm going to.
Got three hands so far.
I'm going to. If there are three hands so far, I will take four comments, but they must be brief, to the point, and don't talk to each other, please.
Who's first? First up is Christina.
Christina.
Hi, thanks, Ann, Christina Delisio, Six Lincoln Ave. I just have a couple of comments. So I guess without a sound ordinance in town, I think it's really great that you are trying to make a compromise. I guess I did look at the report, and without sound measures, my concern is that we're setting like a precedent, and we're going down to slippery soap, and where does this sound mitigation stop around town? And that was my first point. And then what happens if the few neighbors that are complaining at this point are not happy with the mitigation? Point number two, and does it just make sense to go back to tennis? It seems like a whole lot of, I know people love pickleball, but at this point, does it make sense to just cut bait and go back to tennis? Thanks, Chris. Thank you.
Oh, I must have missed a word or two, I'm sorry. Your last point was, if this doesn't work, what can we do next?
Right, if the neighborhood complaints are not relieved, if they're not satisfied with these, you know, this has been a year of, you know, I've been listening and following up on this, if the neighborhood's not satisfied with the mitigation, then what? That's my question.
I think that we close the courts in December. And I think then if the neighbors are still not satisfied, then we come back and talk about it again, but it would be.
So I mean, to me, I'm sorry, go ahead.
In my opinion, it would be nice to try something and see if in fact we can keep the courts where they are and mitigate the sound enough so that the neighbors are not.
So is there some kind of like release that if you do this, we're done? Like, it seems like we're putting a lot of time and money for a few amount of residents that are making a lot of noise? So I just, it sounds like, what, can we get some kind of agreement that this is the end? And if that's not, I'm not sure if this path is the best path. That's it, thanks.
Thank you, I think I understand that. Kim Logue?
Yes, my name is Kim Logue, I live at 142 Summer Street, directly across from the pickleball courts. There are times during the day when all six courts are going, where I can't even be in parts of my house, because if a game is going on, and six games are going on at certain times, it's not all the time, I'll admit that, that that's 4,000 pops going on, which is very annoying. It looks like a fun game, but I think that putting up a sound barrier 12 feet in the front and 12 feet on either side, both sides, not in the back, because that will just go into the woods, may help, but I'm not sure. We went, me and a few, another neighbor, went to the Board of Health meeting the other day, and they were not happy with the sound mitigation report because it was based on a model. They were saying that it needs to be done, a sound report needs to be done at the court. And I thought that's what they had recommended to the select board, which was the purpose of the meeting tonight. But I don't know that that was brought forth in that manner.
Thank you.
And I'm not quite sure $26,000 is going to solve the problem.
Thank you.
George Davis?
Is there? Further discussion?
All right, I'm.
Oh, sorry, George.
I'm sorry, it's Lisa Bonneville.
Hi, Lisa, sorry. I'm, I have just a couple of questions. I feel that the product, I feel that there could be some further information brought before the board in order to make a decision like this, like seeing the product, going to a place where it's been installed, I think those are important aspects. The clear, the promise of a clear sound mitigation barrier would need to be sound absorption, otherwise the sound would be twice as loud for the people playing. And what about people watching from the outside of the clear barrier? Would their voices be heard by the people who they are cheering on on the courts? What will that do to the interaction between the players and their, and their, you know, observers? And the other question is, is it possible, with those points in mind, to back up the sound mitigation barrier to a space behind the fence that goes around the courts, so that people watching could be more interactive with the people playing? Obviously, one concern of mine is the longevity bench that faces these courts, would anyone sitting on those, on that bench be able to watch the people playing? And so those are questions that I wanted to pose. And thank Cheryl and her team for putting time and effort and concern into putting a presentation together, but it seems that it could, there are just a lot of questions hanging about this product. And I don't have experience with grommets lasting for a long time outside, so that's, I just have more questions than concerns, and I guess I've listed them all. Thank you, thank you very much.
Are there any other notes?
Can I just say one more, say one more thing? The report that was done based on a model lists the decibels at 71 at my house, not 50. I think it was stated that it was at 50, and it would bring it down to 40, but the report says 71.
Thank you. What we've been asked to do is say whether we think it makes sense to go forward and find out, see the samples, come back in a month, which would be our August, something or the second meeting in August, or something. I'm personally sorry that we can't do something sooner, because I really feel for people who are not able to enjoy, peacefully enjoy their homes. And I understand it can make people very unhappy, but.
But that's what we're trying to find the balance.
I guess.
And I don't think, I mean, I heard Christina mention making them tennis courts again. I think if we tried to make them tennis courts now, people would play pickleball there anyways, so it's, it's that still. And we, as a Park and Rec Committee, don't see the need for tennis courts that we saw, the need for pickleball courts. So we're trying to balance the needs of the players with the needs of the neighborhood. And it's like Muffin said, it's probably not going to be anybody's 100% happy, but we're trying to find something that's kind of a little over both that will help.
Clearly, what we have is not doing that, actually. So I think we should go, you should go ahead, we should figure out how we're, if the material turns out to look good, how we're going to pay for it, given that we're kind of in between budgets. And I would like to allow from the say, the Parks and Rec Committee should go ahead and investigate this and report back at our second August meeting.
I'll move.
During session.
Well, no, not on that, something after that. Yes.
Okay. Brian?
Yes.
Kathy? Yes. I say yes.
Okay, good. I just have one follow-up question. So the report also threw out some information with regard to paddles and balls. What is the Parks and Recreation's official position on that?
So there is technology that is working towards quieter paddles and balls, they're not readily available right now. I do think that over time, that's probably where the.
Can you get one Amazon?
But I don't think it's going to be quick, no, the ones I got on Amazon, I was sold the worst, so I didn't know, it was like the $25 Franklin ones, like playing with a piece of plywood basically, which is the worst. But so the better paddles are quieter, and they're still working towards it, but I'm sure it's going to be a while before.
So we could probably get a, an acoustic barrier before we can get, I believe so.
That point is that you can't, we're talking about individuals' purchase there.
Right, we would encourage the use.
My paddle.
Equipment.
Right, my paddle's $25, those are like.
No, I agree, it's very difficult, and the effect of those, the paddles and balls did not seem to be anywhere near what it would be for the wall, the wall is, its efficiency is kind of difficult, questionable, but still, I mean, the paddles are even tougher.
And you had mentioned, I would encourage you exploring that relationship with, is it Pickleball USA, or they've reached out to you about, and why not become a, give me a paper, someone, someone just wants to pay for some of that.
Right, we're thinking of checking that, and actually Joe's involved in that too, so it's not like it's one or the other, it may be something that works together. So.
And we can think about, could think about perhaps having clear down at the bottom in the section in front of the longevity bench, and maybe you can't see quite as well in the corner course, but, and more absorption.
What could be done, say the bottom half, say, increasing the height of the fence to 12 feet, with the first 10, the clear, top, bottom two with the, the other one.
That's right.
There are options, I mean, the company makes sizes to fit applications, so the custom sizes is not a great deal.
That would be part of us being the test case.
Cheryl, have you been in touch with your peers in some of these other towns?
Yes, I have.
And are we ahead of the curve?
Not ahead, but there's a peer that about, some people say 1%, some people say 10% of the courts do have the issues with the neighbors. And like I said, my friend in Burlington said, don't get acoustic fence, whatever you do, and then my friend in Tivity is like, move as far away as you can. They are, so yes, there's issues.
We're not the only ones.
Definitely not.
No, I know that. You should all be talking to each other, looking for, they've all got the same problem.
Exactly. Nobody has the silver bullet solution.
No.
Thank you. We can continue this discussion after the meeting, so we can maybe get home and do some of that.
Could I, can I make one request?
Yes, one more.
I'm sorry, I'll make it quick, this is it. Until it can be mitigated, can we reduce the hours from, say, nine to five? Could that be of consideration until we get this cleared up?
That's an interesting suggestion.
It's been, it was suggested last year, but nothing ever happened with it.
This is the first time it's come up inside this board.
But it's come up.
With Park and Rec.
It's come up to the Parks and Rec Committee in the past.
Nine to five sounds like a kind of a hard thing to do.
Yeah, it says working people.
Anyone else speak?
What would happen if you reduced the hours on weekends?
Shirley, continue doing that. I would want to get a recommendation from the Park and Rec Committee. I mean, obviously you guys can hold the rule if that's what you decide to do, but I would like to start there.
Yes.
Yeah, I understand the heat, people want to play early, they want to play late, in the middle of the day, those courts are very rarely used from 11 to 3, and that's busy again, people come home from work, they'd like to play. And Park and Rec initially had the courts open, what dawned on us, eight to eight.
Well, originally it was dawn to dawn.
And it cut the hour to eight, to eight, and see if we were, again, most of the players in the morning and later in the day.
Thank you for that. My only concern about reducing any hours is would that cause more courts to be used at the same time and worsen the noise problem for the hours that it's used? I was a little bit hesitant to make a snap decision about this without.
I would say that is what happened in the mornings, that when people were showing up at 6:30, there was, you know, that would play 6:00 to 90 minutes, 6:30, no, it'll be at 8:00 now, when we moved the time up to 8:00, now all those groups are coming at 8:00. So now they usually are packed right at 8:00 A.M. until 10:30, 11:00.
We're the experts.
But, I mean, certainly look into changing weekend hours, that's what else to do.
They go see us, do it in the middle of the day.
Okay, because nobody's there anyway. I'm going to go back and lock up for just a day.
Let's move on. Thank you, I think you have what you need.
Yep.
We will need to hear more tomorrow.
Okay. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you for saying. I didn't have a choice, I know. All right.
Thank you.